Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming out today. My name is Deborah Travis. I am the President of the Montgomery County, Rutherford City, Floyd County Branch of the NAACP, and also Vice President of the League of Women Voters, Montgomery County. So we certainly welcome you here tonight for our Candidates Forum, for our School Board members, as well as Board of Supervisor member candidates. The whole goal of the NAACP and League of Women Voters is to educate the community by providing a platform to be able to speak and learn more about their candidates, speak to and learn more about the candidates and positions that they are running for. So our advocacy is about voter education and voter protection. So we welcome you to take part in some of our branch activities, as well as our unit activities, and we have some information about the League of Women Voters and the NAACP out in the Forum. So before you leave tonight, please take advantage of that information. So without further ado, I'd like to, first of all, welcome the candidates for being here tonight, but also to say thank you to Karen Jones, who is our Political Action Chair of the NAACP, who will be our moderator tonight. So Karen? Go over to her, and then she will share with you the information about submitting your questions to the candidates. Again, thank you.
Hello, Karen.
Just want to make sure... Oh, that is very much better. So, again, thank you all for coming to tonight's Candidate Forum. We made a decision to combine the Board of Supervisors and the School Board Candidate Forum this evening. We, in our initial contact with all of the candidates, our original date for the School Board was not conducive, did not work well for all candidates, so we offered alternatives. That date also did not work well, and so we decided that it would be best to combine the forums so that the candidates who could attend would be able to be here. Also, so that you know, tonight, the School Board is actually having another meeting, which has prevented some of our candidates from being able to be present this evening. So tonight, we are here because we have elections in Montgomery County for Districts A, C, and D. And so the candidates that are running for office are, for our Board of Supervisors, in District A, Goonan Kiran; in District C, Steve Figulakowski; and District D, Michael Todd King, who has told me not to call him Mr. King. For the School Board, in District A, we have Matt Roberts; District C, we have two candidates running for office, Dana Parton and Adam Ryan; and in District D, Jamie Bond. Tonight, also, we've decided to take questions just a little bit differently, so we won't have question-and-answer orders, but if you do have questions that have already been submitted, or you still want to submit additional questions, we just ask that on your card, you mark whether this is a question for the Board of Supervisors, a question for the School Board, or if you think it's an appropriate question for all candidates. We also are going to informally keep time, so that you know I do have my timer, so if any of the candidates go over their prescribed two minutes, we will still ask them to stop with their answers at two minutes. And so with that, we're going to get started first with our introductions of each candidate. They each will have two minutes to introduce who we are, who they are, and we're going to start first with our Board of Supervisors candidates, and Todd King will go first.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. My name's Todd King. I've lived in District D for well over 50 years. I've been on the Board for just my 12th year. I'm married, have three sons, and one German Shepherd. And I've been a volunteer firing EMS for 20-plus years. Reason I'm running for reelection is I really enjoy living in Montgomery County. Montgomery County is a wonderful place to be. Since I've been here, I've seen it grow. I've seen good times and bad times. Fortunately, most of them has been good times. I really thank the Board of Supervisor and myself. I think we get along good. We may not agree all the time, but we are respectful to each other because we want our citizens to see that we're here for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Goonan?
Well, thank you for the League of Women Voters, and of course, the Montgomery County, Rutherford City, Floyd County NAACP, and Karen Jones' leadership to put this together, and thank you for all being here. I received both my Bachelor and Master degrees in Chemical Engineering before I moved to Little Town, Orona, Maine, almost 40 years ago, as a new bride and also a PhD candidate. Soon after our family started to grow, I decided to dedicate my time to my family and my community, and since then, my quote-unquote "job," full-time job, volunteer work, started first in the Orona, Maine community, and then 25 years ago, when my family moved to Montgomery County. So since then, I've been involved in the schools in various forums, all the PTAs, and, you know, marching band chaperoning, and eventually, I wanted to run for the School Board, so I ran twice and served eight years, from 2014 to 2020, and five of those eight years, I was the Chair of the Board. In addition to my roles in the local school system, I continue to remain involved in other organizations. I'm the President Nominee of Rotary Club of Blacksburg and League of Women Voters Past President, and I was on the trustee for the Regional Library Board, as well as I'm involved with the YMCA Steering Committees and the Montgomery Matters, which is the next Strategic Plan Committee for our county. Married for 37 years, we have three children, live all over the place, and my free time goes with either traveling to them or with my husband to chemical engineering conferences. That's how I keep up, and the rest of the time, I read and paint, so it's all about me.
Thank you. And last, we'll hear from our School Board candidate, Matt Roberts.
My name is Matt Roberts. I'm running for School Board in District A, because there were a number of reasons that led me to make this decision to run. There we go.
Yes, but pull it closer.
The two that really come to mind, first being, my wife, Court, and I have three children in MCPS schools. We've got kids all the way from Margaret Beeks to Blacksburg High Junior, and we have had an excellent experience with MCPS. I want to continue that, make sure that our family and other families are able to get that same excellent level of education. The second reason is a little more nebulous. I'm a criminal defense attorney, and the generational entanglement with the criminal justice system I observe on a daily basis is profoundly depressing. I believe that by focusing our effort on our school systems, we can help dissuade some of that. We can move some people away from those entanglements by providing excellent schools, by providing excellent public schools, by providing positive role models. We can do that by providing things like vocational training, giving children an opportunity to realize and achieve goals. These are all things we can do to help make the next generation better. I believe that the work we put in now will ultimately pay dividends for our children, and my hope is I can play some small role in making a better society for my children and our children.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. So our first question tonight is going to be addressed to our Board of Supervisors candidates, and our question is, what is the top challenge faced by Montgomery County, and how would you address that challenge? Goonan, would you like to answer first?
Sure. It is a little early for me to probably identify the top challenge, even though I've been watching most of the Board of Supervisor meetings, and due to being on the Board with the school system, I had a lot of liaison meetings with the county. But what I've been seeing, especially attending to two-town mayoral forums and also the town council forums, one thing is coming in everyone is the affordable housing. I don't know what the magical, you know, solution to that, but I think one thing we can consider is, instead of, you know, maybe just, you know, looking at our zoning ordinances, which I told myself when I was on the School Board, I won't pay much attention to it, and now here I am, I'm eager to learn, so that's the truth. But, you know, I know that big lots and big houses cost a lot, and then big lots and a lot of high-rise student housing, it's another thing, and I think almost like we need something in the middle. So I will look forward to studying, you know, I really like reading and researching and studying, and I really want to know what else is going on in the other counties, how they are solving this problem, so that's the number-one thing. And the number-two thing, I think the revenue, somehow, I think we have to find a way of increasing revenue, and maybe not touching the taxes, obviously, but since we have so much land that are not taxable with the natural forest and Virginia Tech and the Virginia Tech Foundation, very limited revenue sources we have within the county. Obviously, towns have, you know, hotels and food industry that feeds them a little bit, but it's not the same for the county, so I would like to look into that, what else we can do to increase the revenue.
Thank you. Todd?
Thank you for that question. Myself personally, I think affordable living and affordable housing, Montgomery County's our top priority should be. We have so many people out here wanting to buy their first home, but as I said in Board meetings before, you know, $1 can throw somebody off from affording a house, $1, because they go by your debt ratio, income ratio, when you go for a home. I'll give you an example. Here about a couple of years ago, and I'm assessing this at a $350,000 home. A few years ago, we lowered the tax rate from 89 cents to 70. On a $350,000 home, that saved, at 89 cents, the tax bill was $3,115. When you lowered it down to 70, the tax bill come down to $2,450. That's a savings around $670. That will help the people with affordable living. When we done that, the budget went through. No department had a budget cut. Did they all get every penny they asked for? No, but they got more money that year. I've done some research. Most of your senior citizens, over half of them are living on $15,000 a year. Somehow, we had to come up with, to keep the taxes low and to bring in affordable housing. I know personally, myself, as a Board Member, I have been talking to contractors. I know the Board has talked to some of them, and we are looking at ideas to bring in affordable Right now, when people go out rent, you probably know, I mean, rent's $1,200 to $1,500 a month. People just need somewhere to live that they can afford and call their own. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Matt, a similar question to you. What is the biggest challenge that our school system faces, and how would you address that challenge?
Money. That's the biggest problem that we've got. I think right now, we have this looming continual threat of funding being revoked. What I think we really need to do is work with the Board of Supervisors, trying to ensure we can get as much comfortably that we can apply to the school system. The other is maybe work with our delegates to see if there's somehow we can bring in more income that way. Additionally, I think a great idea would be employing a grant-writing firm. There has to be money out there that we aren't aware of, that's not going to cost the taxpayers of Montgomery County anything more. Obviously, we need a new superintendent. That's going to cost money. We need to be able to pay our teachers a fair wage so we can retain good teachers, so we need to have a constant flow of money coming in. That is my biggest concern for MCPS at the time.
Our next question, I'm also going to address to you, Matt, so we'll start with you, and so this is a question from our audience. Equity and inclusion is a part of the school division's mission. How can School Board members support this mission?
It is a fine-line question, because we have to take into consideration Title IX, and I think some of the current directives are going to require us to tiptoe around that. There's a balancing factor where people need to feel like they can be here. Everyone needs to feel like they can be in MCPS schools. I think the worst thing that could happen to anybody is feeling ostracized. I don't want to see that happen, but at the same time, we do have to toe align with Title IX and make sure we don't lose that funding. Some of that is going to have to be through delicately worded prose, some of that's going to have to be through programs that allow others to participate and contribute, but keeping Title IX in mind and somehow dancing in keeping everyone welcome, feeling like they're welcome, will be a challenge.
Thank you. And so to the Board of Supervisors, this question actually falls in line with what Matt believes is the biggest challenge of our school systems, and so the question is, what is your philosophy when it comes to supporting public schools and their budgets?
You want me to take it?
No, I think Todd is first.
What do I think is...
What is your philosophy when it comes to supporting public schools and their budget?
Well, as I have, I've been, as I said, on the Board for 12 years. Every year, we have given them extra money. They have always got new monies. And I know on a couple of occasions, you know, you hear, "The state's not doing enough." On two different occasions, when we had a meeting with the School Board, I said, "If the state's not doing enough, we need to go to Richmond when they're in session and demand they pay their fair share." If you look at what Montgomery County taxpayers are paying in taxes for the schools, my feeling is Montgomery County citizens are paying their fair share, and if the state's not paying their share, we need to load up and go to Richmond when they're in session. And one of them did say, "Well, if we go up there when they're in session, they're going to lock us up. That'd give us more publicity. I'm ready to go." I do support schools. I always have. Like I said, I have voted to give them more money every year.
Thank you. Goonan?
Yeah, I'm definitely, being on the Board eight years, I am a, you know, proponent of public schools and public school funding 100%, but I, initially, when I got elected, or I was a parent before I got elected, I had this perception of county is not supporting its schools, and soon, I actually find out about that perception being so wrong. And if you look at the chart and follow the, of course, the graphic is not with me, but I'm sure you can find it in the budget books, you know, along the time from 2008, you know, when we had terrible times financially, and forward, Montgomery County has been supporting the school system. But the problem is, the revenue pot is small to begin with, and when you have $4,000, $5,000 of revenue, you know, even if you give the whole $4,000, $5,000 to the school system, you are still not actually providing their needs when they, you know, give you the need-based request. And if you follow, you always, you know, they get to pretty much 46%, 45%, 47%, because they have to take care of the other things. They have to take, you know, take care of the social services, you know, the Sheriff's Department, and this and that, so they can't give all that revenue to you. So that's why, the point comes back to how we can, I think, increase the revenue source. And the other thing is, I think the state is definitely not paying its fair share, and with the leak, with the Washington leak, we had the study done, education funding in public schools in the Commonwealth, or, you know, their lack of funding, and soon after, we put our findings, J-Lark came out with the same, you know, line items that what state needs to do, whether it's the school construction funding, or SOL funding, or anything in between, they are not, you know, funding their fair share. So I agree with Mr. King, Supervisor King, I think we have to really rally and go and be at their door, depending on the, you know, whatever the election outcome is, and actually talking to legislators summertime, when they are in their home state, you know, hometowns, is also very effective, too. And the other thing is, I really want the Virginia Constitution to change from wishy-washy seek to providing to, instead, you know, we want to provide, you know, we ensure we'll give the money for our schools, so that's where I'm standing.
Thank you. Our next question will also be to our Board of Supervisors candidates. I mean, this question, which also comes from the audience, is, how have you made, or would you make, information on property tax assessments and tax relief available to average citizens who may be challenged to visit the county offices during the workday? Goonan?
Looking at me. He's looking at me, too. Oh, but this is a tough one, since I wasn't been, you know, in the greedy, needy things yet. I have to think about this. Obviously, not everybody can come and find out that information at the government center, and I don't know if everybody is able to find out things through the Internet either, you know. I think it has to be balanced, you know, you may maybe send a letter, you may put it in the social media on the county side, maybe a little more visible, instead of, you know, putting, trying to put all the tabs to find out about the information, under which category, you know, you are looking for the information. Yeah, I don't think I have a good answer, but sure, I will put that question down and find out more if I get elected.
Todd?
One thing is, we could put it in a tax bill, send it out when they send a tax bill, the information on it, and we could put it all over the Internet, the county website, and it's a good thing, you know, people do need the information, and like I stated, you know, we could put it in a tax bill. When they get their tax bill, they could see where they could get relief, and what the percentage, as the Board, we're going through that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Matt, a question for you. Do you see the role of a School Board member to include advocating for education as a public good to increase support among taxpayers and legislators?
Yes. Period. All three of those, absolutely. That is the role of a School Board member, is to increase funding, to increase, I guess, a discussion with legislators. Anything that's going to increase and improve revenue is a role of a School Board member.
This next question I'm going to ask to all three of the candidates, because it is about transparency and communication amongst the School Board and the Board of Supervisors. And so the question first references a miscommunication or the appearance of a miscommunication between the two boards during the past budgeting season, and so this question is, what have you done, and will you continue, or will you continue to do, to ensure better communication and cooperation between the two boards? So how will you accomplish that? And so I'm going to let Matt answer first.
I think the easiest way to do that is to be open in communication. My understanding, and I'm not going to open a can of worms, but I understand that there were some issues with some budgeting, there were some hurt feelings, I may be putting that delicately, but I think that's something that could be addressed through speaking directly with each other, following through with what we've said, making sure everyone is on the same page, making sure no one feels as though they've been misled. Like, those are the real ways to communicate effectively between the boards. I do not think the School Board and the Board of Supervisors has to be adversarial. I believe the School Board and the Board of Supervisors can work together for the good of all citizens of Montgomery County.
Goonan, I'll let you answer next, and then, Mr., I mean, Todd.
So you want me to do this? Okay, sorry. Well, the working together is the thing, and I think in the course of time, I've been here 25 years, as I follow the relationship between both Boards, there were downtimes, there were uptimes, and there were downtimes, so one wishes that they work together all the time, and I think the, you know, biggest thing, so I agree with Matt, just we have to work together for the common good, and it's the education of our kids, and I think meeting jointly is a really good place to, you know, get to know each other, talk about the issues, and share ideas, and maybe the Chairs of both Boards, and Vice Chairs of both Boards, when they communicate together, which they have liaison meetings, and they will carry on what is communicated to their individual Board members fairly and squarely, and I think that each Board and all seven Board members will be on the same level of understanding what is going on. I think that probably will help in the long run.
Thank you. And Todd?
Well, to start with, I think both Boards need to have more joint meetings, and when we go to the joint meetings, we need to go in with open mind. If I think one way and somebody else thinks another way, we need to leave that at the door, because one person's not actually right, so if we sit down and discuss it, I think the big thing is, during budget session, it needs to have priorities set up. If we get this money here, this is what we're going to do with it. Instead, after people get this money, then they change their mind, and it goes somewhere else. I mean, that leads to a lot of communication. Communication is a big key.
The next question, we'll start first with Board of Supervisors, and so this question is, how would you expand public transportation throughout the county? And Todd, first, please?
That's a big thing. We've been talking about that since our last county administrator was here. It's something that I would like to see happen, because I have citizens ask for it. The biggest thing is, if we could get... The biggest thing is if we could get grants or maybe partner up with the towns, maybe the city of Rafford. But the biggest thing is, like, out in the rural areas, you just have a few houses in the area. I don't know how you could get it, transportation out that far. But I would like to see it. And like I said, we have been working since the last county administrator. And he talked to city of Rafford, and that is something we need to work hard on, transportation.
Goonan?
Yes. You know, I looked into this a little bit, and I saw that, and it's online available. BT has a transit strategic plan. And apparently, they sought public input in spring of 2023, and they have a plan to expand, you know, some. Right now, they serve thirty-four square miles of the county. And if you think that Montgomery County is three hundred and eighty-nine square miles, you see that they can only probably hit to ten percent with, between the towns and approximately. So the expansion, I saw the details, you know, they have some extension areas, but I don't, I'm not hundred percent sure from the study how many more square miles will be reached. And that definitely doesn't go towards neither Reiner nor the Elliston area. But like Todd said, we have rural areas with, you know, distance between the houses. And it all comes back to funding partnership. But it made me, I guess, happy to see there is a study and they are being tried. And I think you pointed out that this has been looked into since, I guess, the many county administrations' time. So I hope we can extend. I know that's an issue for our citizen to participate in many events. Still pretty decent public transit that we are lucky to have, but it all comes down to money, I believe.
Thank you. How will you ensure that the concerns of all stakeholders are addressed? And that would be students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers?
First, I'm not as mean as I look, so people are always welcome to call me. In fact, I had somebody call me this morning. I'm gonna, I plan on traveling from school to school, talking to teachers, faculty, administration, ask them what's working well for them, ask them what can be improved. I would encourage families to call me if they have a problem, if they have an issue they'd like to raise, or if something's working well for them. I think by being open and willing to listen to criticisms as well as something positive is a way to address those concerns. And if somebody wants to call me up and complain, I'll listen to you. I've been called worse, I'm called worse every day. So please, call me if you have something to say. I would be grateful and happy to listen. Nothing gets done without constructive criticism.
Going to give you another question, right? Back to back, we're going to fire them off. The next question is, as a new school board member, how would you get caught up on all the policies, protocols, and overall expectations at being a board member? And, this is a two-part question. So it's a two-parter. And do you feel equipped for the position?
Second question first. Absolutely, I am equipped for the position. First question, I think the easiest thing to do, which I do now, is watch the meetings online. You don't have to come in person, but you can certainly view them. You can see how the meetings take place, see how people are airing their opinions. And the other thing is, everything's in writing. The protocols are right there in black and white. You can look them up, read them, tells you exactly what you need to do.
Thank you. This next question to the Board of Supervisors actually is a really good question because they're all good questions. This one's not exceptional. But it's because both, Goonan as being a former school board member and then Mr. King for your years of service on the Board of Supervisors, and we are continually talking about money. So this question just relates and goes back to a comment, one of your answers, Todd, that each year, the school, the Board of Supervisors have given the schools more money every year. And so the question is, how does that account for increased cost? And I would rephrase that a little bit for Goonan, is have you seen or experienced that increased cost or seen the increase in the monies given positively affect increased cost? Does that make sense?
Well, you know, there's of course always, you know, increased cost of living. And that, you know, translate to teacher salaries and the things that you purchase for the school, pencils and papers and everything else in the school system. And I think when the superintendent comes with a need-based budgets, they put that, you know, in the numbers. But the problem is, you know, it comes to the supervisor side, and because they have only X number of extra revenue to share within their, what they take care, whether it's the sheriff's office or the libraries or the school system, which, you know, obviously the school system is a big chunk of their budget. That money, when it's distributed, it's never enough to accommodate all those increases that economy brings in. And that's why, you know, we always struggle to give the teachers a raise. I mean, even though every year teachers got some raise, you know, and in the area, Montgomery County did very well in the last, you know, many years. But when you look at the Virginia teacher salaries, they are still very under average of national average. So I think there is somehow, we are always playing a catch-up. And I think that's why state's responsibility should increase will be a better solution than expecting the county keep up with all those.
And so Todd, with the increases, do you believe that the increases have benefited the increased costs?
With the, the more money that we give them each year, I think it has benefited them. I mean, I think, you know, I may be mistaken, but I'm pretty sure that now the teachers are number two in the region for pay. And we have strived on that for several years to get it up there. But what you have to understand too is, when everything goes up, so does the citizens' bills go up, light bill, grocery bill, and all this. So you can't keep taking out of their pocket because they are going to suffer. We have to set a priority list. And yes, I have said it many a times, the employees are the most valuable thing the county and the school system has. Without employees, there's no county, there's no school system.
Matt, a question for you. So you believe that says... So the question is that Mr. Roberts says he is trying to help problems with the school's budget. How are you going to attempt to solve this budget problem?
Again, a big part is looking into some grant writing. There's money out there that's not going to come directly out of the citizens' pockets from Montgomery County. I think that's going to have to be the first part. And I know we've heard from everybody else tonight that everybody's pinched. I understand that. So we might be running into dry pockets with the Board of Supervisors. We need to start looking at other sources. Richmond, Virginia this year had a substantial surplus. We can use that in the school system. So there are ways that we can get around taxing our citizens, one, through those grants, two, going to Richmond itself and demanding some of that surplus money be used in our school system. Goonan brought it up earlier. Our teachers are underpaid. We can use that money, that surplus money, to start funding some of our schools, to start paying our teachers a fairer wage. That's where I think it has to come from. We can't keep taxing everybody.
So our next question to the Board of Supervisors. Where do each of you stand on issues of the Mountain Valley Pipeline's expansion and the compressor station for Eastern Montgomery County? Do you realize... That's it. That's the question. Where do you... I'll read it again. Where do each of you stand on issues of the Mountain Valley Pipeline's expansion and the compressor station for Eastern Montgomery County? Todd?
If you remember when this Mountain Valley Pipeline first started coming in, we had meetings in the communities, the Board of Supervisors did, in the communities. And we hired a lawyer, I think, I'm looking at Mary, out of Washington DC to try to fight it. We have always, I have, I shouldn't say we, I apologize, I have been against it. One thing is, you're taking people's property that they won't never be able to use again because the pipe's under it. And I'll leave it at that. I have always been against it, and I did vote to hire that attorney out of DC to try to fight it.
Goonan?
Well, this is interesting because I know it, you know, part of my district and Sarah Bone was working on it, informing the constituents along the way when the thing's happening. And I think we probably lost the fight a little bit, and it is, you know, what it is in a sense right now. But I am in the circle of the group, and then there's a meeting about the station on October ninth in the, I think, Blacksburg Community Center. I think in terms of the station, even in Elliston area, I mean, ideally, I was against all the pipeline coming through. But obviously, it is coming through. And then now we can, what we can do about the station, I will find out more when I attend that meeting. I don't think I am knowledgeable enough to make a comment right now. I wish we weren't in that situation to begin with, I think, with the pipeline.
And so we'll have one final question for each of our candidates this evening. And so Matt, your final question for tonight will be, how will you protect students, faculty, staff, and administrators from threats and attacks?
Franklin County has a great idea that they're working on now. It's instituting artificial intelligence in their camera systems. And the program that they're working with would be able to recognize firearms. Before, obviously, an SRO or maybe even a student was able to recognize themselves. So by having this software, it immediately recognizes the potential of a firearm, alarms go off, we can get much quicker access to law enforcement, teachers would have an opportunity to get doors locked, things like that. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse on the SROs because I know that's still a little sore, but it seems like it's something that wouldn't be tremendously expensive but could be of exceptional value to keeping our students and teachers safe. And it's one of the very few times you're going to hear me advocate for technology, but it seems like an excellent program, and it's something we should look into.
Thank you. And Goonan and Todd, your last question is, with an increasing population, how do we keep the county a great place to live? Goonan?
Well, that's a great question because I think when I talk to our friends that moved here forty, fifty years ago, they can't believe what we are doing and how crowded and populated we're getting. And I compare my twenty-five years, that there was no Target and Walmart and 460 and all that. We are definitely growing. And I think all the parts that are involved, both towns and the county and Virginia Tech especially, have to get together and find a solution because growth is good and you definitely want to grow. But infrastructure, if they can't catch up with the growth, we're going to be like really in trouble. I mean, we are already in trouble on the Price's Fork. The traffic is horrendous there if you try to go from anywhere along that road because all the schools and the university, two universities and three schools or four schools, they are all on the same narrow road. And we have really two main roads, you know, Main Street and, you know, especially for the Blacksburg, obviously. But because of the comprehensive plan and Montgomery Matters is work in progress, and I realize and learn that there are opportunities to develop some urban areas, they call those UDAs. And I think it's still, you know, can be developed. And most of the citizens of the county in all those areas, when they have the survey, they put their yellow dots or green dots, one of the dots, in the area that between Blacksburg and Christiansburg to develop in that corridor. And that is something that I will look into, how it will turn out and will come to fruition. Because I think it is a good idea that then you don't touch the rural character much, but you're bringing business along those two areas. Again, maybe revising the zoning laws and, but investing in infrastructure, I really worry about the roads and the traffic. And I know there was at one point, and again, this was a topic earlier with, you know, mayoral candidate session that we had in Rotary too. You know, there was this extension work that was going to take the heavy traffic from Price's Fork along the Merrimack with that extension and didn't work out. And it was, you know, exciting topic at one point. But again, it turned down that, you know, the money issue. Unfortunately, they decided it is costing too much. And maybe we have to advocate in the state level and talk to weed out what can, also we do that, but we won't touch the beauty, but, sorry, I keep going.
No, I don't keep going.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd?
Increase the population. You know, when you grow the economy as Montgomery County has, you're going to have more population come in. So I don't want to say control it, but you got to keep a sharper eye on it. And what we are doing now is, well, the county staff is, if you know, they're going around to each area in Montgomery County and doing a Montgomery Matters forum with neighbors and citizens that live in that area. Input, that's the big thing. You have to have input from the citizens because they actually live in that area. And I think the county staff is doing a really good job having meetings in the neighborhood and all. And there's one thing that we used to do when I first got on the board was neighborhood meetings. I think that'd be good for us to get in, back into as a board.
Thank you. And so now each candidate will have two minutes to give their closing statements. And so we'll start first with Matt Roberts, who is running for school board.
Sure. Though, keep this as short as I possibly can. I am genuinely hopeful I could help the school system. I am genuinely hopeful that the efforts that I put into the school board pay dividends for our children, not just mine, but all of theirs. My hope is that the work I put in will lead to a better society for all of our children, and that is the chief reason I'm doing this. Thank you. That was one minute.
That was, that was short, but that was quick.
Okay. And we'll have closing statement first from Todd King, who's running for Board of Supervisors.
I want to thank you again and thank everybody for coming out. I guess the main thing I could say is some people agree with me, some people don't. But I made one promise when I run for office. I would never vote for a tax increase. I would do everything I can do for the citizens. I made one promise. I keep my promise. And just because I don't raise taxes don't mean we can't grow the economy. That's one job that it is, the Board of Supervisor's job. Grow the economy so you can relieve the pressure off the citizens. And I think we've done a good job of that. We have a lot more work to do. And I want to be here so we can get a lot more work done. Again, thank you all for coming out.
And Gunnin?
Why, why I run, all right? Well, I, by no means I claim that I know it all, but I am experienced. But it is worth mentioning that I have attended many county school board liaison meetings, Greater Montgomery Area meetings with two towns, Virginia Tech and MCPS, when I was on the school board for five, as a chair for five years. And I'm part of the Montgomery Matters Steering Committee. I think that's also going to help me. I'm a woman of service. I enjoy serving my community. That's what I've been doing 31 years. I have been lucky to be able to make this as my full-time job. And I'm thankful for my husband's support in making this passion actually possible. Believe that I learn continually and, you know, I believe that we have to learn continually and challenge ourselves. I believe that local government is very important, and I would like to invest my time and energy to serve the county citizens. I know that I can be a voice of reason, and I'm willing to, I can, and also willing to work with everyone. I'm a good listener, I'm a good researcher. I believe that my skills will come handy as a supervisor. And when I commit, I commit 100%. So I'm looking forward to serving the constituents of District A, but as well as all Montgomery County citizens. That was also my mission when I was on the school board. I didn't want to serve just District A students, which they can vote to elect you to begin with. So it's important to serve every citizen in the county. So I'm looking forward to get your votes, starting tomorrow.
Thank you. Can we give all of our candidates a round of applause, please? I want to thank you all also for coming out this evening and working with us as we did our, this candidate forum slightly different from the previous forums that we had. My goal this evening was to make sure that we asked as many questions of the candidates that we had at previous forums, and I believe that we accomplished that this evening. And so just a reminder that early vote starts tomorrow. So I expect to see you all at the polls tomorrow. That way you can spend the rest of the election season getting your neighbors out to vote. Our next forum will be with our House of Delegate candidates. That forum will take place on October the 2nd at Asbury United Methodist Church, beginning at 6:30 PM. And so I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.